We would now bring your order. Board of the Independent School Board trustees meeting. We will follow the agenda as print. We will call for an order. Invitation by Mr. Robert Reed. Pleasure United States and the Texas flag. We will do roll call. Mr. Reed?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I hope during this Christmas season that all of you get to experience the love of Christ. And at this time, I look forward to all us joining hands and praying together right now if we could. As we teach the way that our Savior taught us how to pray in the Bible. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We do have a form. Mr. Reed, please.
President Lofton?
Here.
Vice President Barti?
Here.
Secretary Ambrose?
Here.
Trustee Frank?
Here.
Trustee Gilroy?
Here.
Trustee Kenlaw?
Here.
Trustee Reed?
Here.
We do have a form. Our mission statement. Our mission as the primary source of public education in the community is to meet the unique educational needs of our diverse population by providing comprehensive quality education for the students of Port of the Independent School District. We will now move to close meeting. Under the authority of Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.074, and 551.082, the board will meet and close meeting to consult with attorney regarding opinion or contemplated litigation, including settlement offers and other legal matters in which the duty of the attorney to the government to provide under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Board of Texas are clearly covered by attorney's fine privilege. Consider and complain or charge against an officer or employee. Consider superintendent's evaluation and related issues. Consider personnel recommendations, Texas Government Code 551.074, as follows. Consider, and if appropriate, approving broader teachers. Consider Level 4 agreements of sharing bootag. We will now move to a closed session at 5:30 PM. We will reconvene at 7:00 PM. We will now reconvene. Board of the Independent School Board trustees. At 7:05 PM, we will now convene an open meeting. We have a change in the schedule tonight because I have to be working 25 minutes. We're going to move to personnel, and then we'll also do consent agenda, and then we will go back, finish the board meeting, and then go back into closed meeting at the end of meeting. The first thing we will have is personnel report by Dr. Porter.
I give you a list of teachers for consideration.
All the board members have seen the list of the employees. It will be approved. I'll give you a minute to look back over again. Okay, I call for a motion on considering, if appropriate, approving broader teachers.
So.
Second.
That was approved. My motion was made by Donald Frank and second by Ms. Ambrose. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? We will now have a considering Level 4 agreements of sharing bootag.
Mr. President, I move to sustain the superintendent's decision at Level 3.
Please, second. So. We have a motion made by Ms. Ambrose and second by Mr. Barti. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? No. We have five yes and two no's. The Level 4 agreements of sharing bootag has been sustained from superintendent's decision. We will now move to consent agenda. The following items, which are of a routine and are recurring nature, have been designated consent agenda items by the Board President, Dr. Carter B. Low. All of the items in the consent agenda will be asked upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by any trustee. In which event, the item or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual considerations in its own sequence after the items not requiring separate discussion have been added. I'll give you, we have the consent agenda items, 1 through 12. Who want to discuss any of them? No?
Yes, Mr. President, item number 1, please.
You want to get a motion?
Oh, I need a motion on the floor. I'm sorry. I need a motion first on the floor. Just give me, I need to make a motion.
I made a motion.
Okay, motion was made by Mr. Kenlaw and second by Mr. Barti. And now we can discuss the items. We have item number nine.
And Trustee Gilroy, number one.
Yeah, you can discuss them one at a time.
One at a time?
Yeah, then discuss them all.
Okay.
You want to go on, or you?
Yeah, we're going to roll call.
Trustee Gilroy wants to discuss number one. His book is his act, so we'll give him opportunity to do that, and I want number nine.
Okay, is that, is that it?
Yeah, they're all on the floor.
They're all, yeah, they're all on the floor discussing, but right now we got a discussion on number one and number nine right now. We'll discuss, Mr. Gilroy, number one first. On the floor. No, we don't vote on them. We don't.
No, no, no. You've got a motion on the floor for all of them. You can still discuss any ones you want to discuss. And then when you vote, you're voting on the all of them. That's a consent agenda item.
So, go ahead, Mr. Gilroy.
Mr. Reed?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. You can call the answer for us. There was a, from November 1st, on page 16, there was a telephone conference with a board member regarding distribution of campaign material in school property. Telephone conference with administration regarding the same. Can you give us a little more insight into that conversation?
Not in open session. Mr. Reed?
It's a building issue.
No, it's not a building issue. You're asking me what I discussed with a board member and superintendent. You guys are my clients. As attorney by privilege, before you want me to discuss your feelings in open session, then I can do that, but at any time you discuss that, if you talk to me or in executive session, that's all we have is an executive session. It's supposed to be an executive session also. If you want to talk to me about any contemplated pending matters or anything that's covered by attorney by privilege, anything I talk to any of you, it's covered by attorney by privilege.
I guess, here's what makes me concerned is the court about campaign material.
And I don't mind talking to you about it, but not in open session, session only?
Okay. Now we have item number nine.
Okay, yes, thank you, Mr. President. I want to give a more clarification from the superintendent about Woodrow Wilson and what we have with that building, because I know it's spent a lot of money and dealing with that property over there. So if you would enlighten me and the board about what's the plans with Woodrow Wilson and what we can go with it.
Great. Yes, and Dr. Kenlaw, as you said, we put a lot of money into Woodrow Wilson, so we must keep it going. It is an old building, 90 years old, and there's some things that happened that we must address recently. We can have a go in it rained. It rained into, there was a leak, it ran into the auditorium. Now, I'm going to ask Harvey Blankenship to come forward, and I'm going to ask him to kind of give us a synopsis because there's some things, the parapet that was rained into, there's the kubla, and all of those things on top that has some issues going on. So I'm going to ask him to kind of help us with that.
Dr. Porter, first of all, I'm forward. Good afternoon. We have been, this last big unusual rain with wind, we had water intrusion. We did a water test to make sure it wasn't on the black part, that we had some patchwork done. And the water intrusion that we see coming in is mainly through the parapet wall. And I'll try to keep it as simple as just in terms, you have your roof that rolls up on the side of the walls, and Woodrow Wilson has parapet walls, and all edges, even on your shekel, slope roofs up at the very top, and then you have, they call it the kubla, which is what I call a steeple. We feel like we got intrusions there. We did physically see water going in the wall, whether it is the roof that comes up and you've got a piece of metal they call counterflashing on the wall. And you've got sealant that was put there, you know, and I think the roof is about eight years old, and we had water coming in there, and then you have an old stone cat flashing, which is the top of that parapet wall. And all of the sealant is between the bottom of the stone cap and that wall, I mean, I'm talking about the interior of the wall. There's water intrusion there also. When you get enough rain with wind, it forces water sideways. That's, these places break down. You wouldn't believe the amount of water that you can get. It's running down, getting in behind that counterflap wall, counterflashing in the stone cap, and running inside the interior wall and causing damage. And that's where the field, most of the field, we have a few problems that we see in the field, where we have some elevation breaks from slope roof to, actually, you can see that slope roof at the very top, but it actually makes another breakdown. Although you can't see it because there's another wall that's up behind the store. But the main water intrusion that we witnessed was on the, the, the parapet wall in the sealant that was applied eight years ago that's failing. You see cracks in it someplace, you almost take your finger in the hole, and it's just deteriorating through time. Now, we have called, and we did have a warranty, and we have called GAF the manufacturer. We do have what they call a diamond plate warranty. We've filed a claim with GAF manufacturer, and they're interested in getting somebody out to take a look at that. And this, this money, I think, is in case because we have new walls, low sheet rock paint on the interior. If this warranty is not, I guess, if it's not covered in the warranty with the water's intrusion, then we would have the money to do the repair.
So, so why would it be covered if we have insurance to?
Well, the roof is an animal, it's on, a lot of these companies write these warranties in their favor, and it's a lot of the things in it, you know, it does, you can't just put your finger and say, when they set the diamond plate warranty, everything's covered. They start, you know, saying different things that it wasn't covered because of this, or it wasn't covered because of that. So it's not black and white for us to just say. So you have to file a claim, but I have to come out and assess where the intrusion is and determine at that time whether that warranty could have been set up.
So were you talking about ceiling? You said that was ceiling? You said ceiling, some type of ceiling that went around them?
Well, yeah, when that metal flashing, your row roofing comes up, which is your membrane roofing, that's really part of the roof. Roof and parapet wall cap is kind of separate. When people think it's a slit and it's a roofly, well, it's not that simple saying it's a roofing, because the membrane is not the problem. It's where it changes directions when you have roofing. It changes directions to a vertical surface. That also has to be sealed a certain way, and sometimes that sealant breaks down, the building moves, and that sealant breaks loose, and...
Well, why can you provide this, this warranty paperwork to this board? Because we need the superintendent of a lot of Woodrow Wilson and about some of those things that happened with that building. But we depend, and I hope that he's depending on people with expertise of warranties and how to maneuver those warranties to benefit this school district. So I would want you, or have Dr. Porter, find out if that type of warranty would benefit this district based upon rain going sideways into a building. So we need to be sure about that, because I don't think taxpayers would like if we continue spending money on that, that we are, we don't have allocated for that building. So if we can get that paperwork, that warranty paperwork, if we want it.
We have the, we have the diamond, but I have it right here. But written that warranty in the manufacturer, like I said, some of the roof experts that take these warranties are written by experts that work for the manufacturer.
I'm sorry, sir, pardon, Russian. So in the brokerage of this deal for rehabbing, was it not specified that there would be a warranty to cover the roof? I'm not quite understanding why you don't think the warranty may cover the roof.
Let me say, Harvey, help me when I say this. Okay, we have a warranty for the roof, and it's the warranty that goes up okay under 2029. It's a 20-year roof warranty. Now, with the initial inspection, it, he said that the roof was in excellent condition because the roof is just nine years old. The roof, wait, I'm sorry, seven years old. The roof was put on in 2009. So the roof itself is in excellent condition. What Mr. Blankenship is trying to say, there's something, like he said, a sealing around that I don't even think was changed at the time. We talked of parapet, which is something that goes around the perimeter of the building. So it may be that, and it also may be, we talked about the brick may be, even the water may be seeping through the brick itself, which would have, which would have to put a sealant. But the money is, right now, we're in construction, so we're going to have to hurry and repair those things now, try to get that fixed now before the next rain, because we don't want the work that we're doing at this point to be damaged.
Okay, I'm, I'm, let me make sure I understand what you're saying. So the bricks and other supplies there may or may not be warranted?
Okay, the roof and what I just said about brick is two different things. What I said was the parapet around the perimeter may be leaking. Also, there may be an issue with the brick. Water seeping through the brick is an old building, and that means we have to seal the brick, which is a possibility. We just have to find out. But right now, we want to make sure that we address what we know is happening with the building, where the, where the leaks are coming in before another hard rain like we had a week and a half ago.
My question is, my question is that this is not the first time we had a hard rain. So isn't there somewhere some proof that you've done a lot, and you should have caught this instead of, at this point in time, where we had hard rain? I know in the last couple of months, we had hard rain. So you're telling me that it didn't leak and rain in the building at that time we had construction going on before we finished to get to this point?
Well, what happens with rain with water, depending on the rain, the direction of the wind, you can get like, you may get two drops at one time of rain and one time of wind, and depending if it's salt, if it's flash flood, or whether it's a constant rain with the wind in a certain direction, then it may leak a drop or two, then the next time it may run, like pour it out of a glass of water. So it just varies from the amount of rain and the wind direction. There's a lot of things they call water travel. And Dr. Porter's talking about the walls, I know you're confused right now, but first, what I was talking about, the major intrusion of water is on the interior of the parapet wall that has a stone cap at the top, not word referring to, is a possible, because we're also getting intrusion of water. Brick is porous, block is porous, and that building is very old. We've got cracks in the stone, we've got, if you walk around the building. And there's some other work that may need to be done, which you're not going to get the major intrusion that we had last time from water that may be coming from the exterior wall into the building. Most of the water, the main water intrusion is from this parapet wall, from our observation. We've got the kubla that is up high, you have to have to get up there to work on that, you've got to have special equipment because of the danger. Nobody says that because of the cost of equipment to get up there safely and get that, you've got to have special equipment to reach that steeple. You can't just get a line and stick it up there or anything anymore.
So what you're saying, sir, that if insurance does not cover this, is the loss that this district is going to have to afford?
Yes.
And from what you're saying, is rather significant?
I'm sorry.
From what you're saying, is probably rather significant?
The cost is rather significant.
From what you're saying, yes, that's my question.
Yes, we actually had a roofer look at it and give us a price to only cover the parapet where we see the main intrusion, which is the cap and down to the counterflashing on the wall or PVC material that you wouldn't have, you wouldn't be using any sealant, which for the main, sealant will last a bit long, a very good year if I can say that, but eventually seeing with movement of the building and enough sun and enough rain through years, it can break down.
Well, was it not known that could possibly have a problem in the initial rehab phases?
What's Dr. Porter saying?
In the initial rehab phase, was that not detected as a possible issue with rain?
In the initial?
I think what she's asking, when we changed the roof in 2009, was that included?
Yeah, that's correct.
And the answer is no, it was not.
It wasn't included in what?
The parapet, all of that came under the parapet and all the other things that are causing?
Well, another thing is, we go back, we actually had a copy of what they had. It said a total re-roof. We looked at the only paperwork we had, a quote on the initial roof when they did it, and it, it talks about, it's got some unit listed items that there, there was some wooden rock wood also that had to change if they did, if they did process it where that had to change some of the figures of boards or whatever. But the roof wasn't really a quote. I can't, by looking at it, I can't specifically tell, even though it says a complete re-roof, I can't tell by that warranty, by the verbiage in the warranty versus that quote exactly. They didn't get like every little component and put it in that quote. And the same thing with that warranty, if you read it, it's very hard to say, this piece right here is covered, this piece right here is covered, this piece, it's not that specific, it's not that specific.
So is it, okay, do we have two different types of insurance for the roof? Do we have Texas windstorm insurance for the roof as well, because it's right there by the water? Do we have that type of insurance?
I think we do.
I think let James ask, and she'll tell them. Let James?
If there was a major event that occurred, we are covered by insurance, and it's not through the windstorm, but it is similar to it. It's just our regular property insurance. There's a deductible for each of our buildings, but if there's major damages, we're not speaking of major damages here, I know it sounds like it is, but this is not, in the grand scheme of things, $100,000 or a million dollar roof is not considered major.
You're saying, what is our deductible?
It's a $25,000 for each facility.
Yeah, could we, if we had to pay that $25,000, and I would save the district $75,000 versus paying $100,000? I'm just asking.
I can check, but I do not think it's going to be applicable in this case.
Okay, thank you, Ms. James.
And let me, while I have the mic, let me just clarify. What we're trying to do with emergency resolution is to make sure that, again, we're, as everyone has explained, trying to make sure that we've got everything covered. We're going to be going to two needs. We can't, we've got all that construction work that's underway. It's an emergency because we need to make sure we're not wasting the $9 million we're spending inside by not spending $100,000 to make sure we're covering the things that we're trying to cover. But we're spending $9 million on construction inside.
Thank you, Ms. James, but I still have a concern about this warranty. I think, and I understand, we've got a lot of work going on in the district, but, you know, we wasted taxpayers' money based upon, you know, someone is not knowing if the warranty is going to benefit the school district. I have a concern about that, I'm going to be honest with you. So we really need to know what type of insurance or warranty paperwork that we have that is going to help our district. Rain coming inside is causing damage that goes down the walls of a facility. Obviously, that's going to be a lot of money that we're going to have to spend. That's my concern. I just hope that, you know, we really have someone that's really going to have the warranty paperwork.
My concern is also, we just spent a billion plus dollars on the Queen with the new roof. So what you're telling me right now, the warranty, it worked the evening?
No, that's not what he's saying. No, so sorry.
The paper's written out, but the warranty that you have is going to say 30 years, no cost to the district.
No matter what.
No matter what. Now, when I say no matter what, the wind, they will, for whatever the roof's waiting, ready for, now if you get a catastrophic, say you get a catastrophic five hurricane and winds are over your regular windstorm, which is I think 140 or 150, no, it's not going to cover, it's going to be a catastrophic event. But this 30-year, no cost to the district, where the manufacturer picks up, the installer picks up the first two years of labor, and the manufacturer, which is Guard, picks up the last 28 years of labor, and they pick up all the interior. So I'm not saying if you have a catastrophic event, earthquake, or tornado hits it or all, no, it does not cover that. But for anything else, normal roof leaks of any kind, where it doesn't matter, if it's not for 30 years, you're not going to spend a penny. And this district's spent a lot of money on trying to repair older buildings and older roofs and, you know, trying to get the best roof warranty in new projects we can get. Does it cost some money out? Sometimes it's up to $250,000 or more, and you just spend at one point, what is it, $3 million on the Queen after it's nine years old, I think, or somewhere around there? I think it's worth the money to get a warranty and get a product that's top of the line. But you have to pay for it. That type of stuff, those type of warranties, that kind of manufacturer material, it costs.
I want, I want to remind us board members that when we were looking at other buildings and we were talking to individuals who were making presentations to us about the buildings that we were putting here in the district, always be mindful that when we brought to our attention that a slope roof as opposed to a flat roof is always going to be damaged because flat roofs don't do well here in southeast Texas. And so when we're, and we understand that it adds to a cost to the building whenever we put a roof on that is slope. But ultimately, we're going to, we're going to reap that when we do it. And so I was supposed to, the roof that we're talking about tonight is not a slope roof. Right?
Well, the partial, the up there where it's, I don't call it the steep, the kubla, if you look up, it has some, well, if us had a slope roof on the front back of the main building, when it's facing lateral, you do have a, actually, composition shekel, slope roof in that area, but everything else on that, on that structure is what you, some people call a built-up roof, flat roof. It's a slope roof because it goes, discovers the drains. It says discovers which actually slope to that exterior, goes through the parapet wall, you know, hold the parapet wall, it goes to the collection box, to the downspout, and it just goes down on the ground. That's the way this was designed. So you have, there's a lot of your roof designs, but that's the way this was designed.
Do you recall, Doc, the amount of this roof seven years ago, what it cost the district at Wilson?
I, it was over a million dollars, but I've only been here five and a half years. I don't know if you know, I started out in the maintenance department, but I actually ran work, I was in construction for four years, I was a superintendent for about 26 years. So I'm very familiar with all of this process, but I have the roof warranties and roof manufacturers that write these, you know, roof warranties. But I have the roof warranties and roof manufacturers that write these, you know, roof warranties that, you know, everybody gets into. There's only a couple of really good, what I call warranties that companies come out with and, you know, there's a couple of companies that do that, and like I say, a lot of people. Because of the cost, and that's like Mr. Frere was talking about. The only thing about a slope roof, the reason why they're doing a lot of slope roofs is they're so expensive. Your metal slope roofs, when you talk about, you're, you're talking about three times the cost. When you go to the metal slope roof, not only you have longer material, it's costly money, but metal, the slope roofs are just a lot more expensive, the framing. So that's why you see a lot of flat roofs in this area. People know there's a lot of water, but do you want to spend? It just depends, you want to spend three times the money getting slope structure. Sure, you can have all slope structures, but you're going to pay a lot of money. And that's the reason why I go to a lot of the paper roof systems in this area because, because if you get a large building, it's the square footage, the money just jumps way up there.
I just have one more question. So to have clear sort of blanking ship, of all the construction projects that are going on in the district, you're responsible or you're more or less the head guy in charge?
Well, I don't know, you know, I came home is to, to help Reed and Shar. He was going to head up and I was going to help him, you know, he knew of my construction experience because we had done each other previous two years, kind of lived close to each other one time. It was the same city, on the same blocks. And we knew, he knew I was in construction, that's what I did all my life. This is the first time I've ever worked for, you know, where we clocked in or whatever.
And you would be making all of the decisions and advising Dr. Porterie or someone else of, of anything that would come up that would give us pause in terms of additional monies? You would want to make that decision and advise him?
Yes, yes ma'am. I do what I can.
Oh, I understand.
We have a lot of other projects and I'm overseeing now.
Exactly, definitely.
Yeah, I, I, I try to get around as much as possible with the paperwork. Because I, I guess I'm, if you could say, I guess I'm responsible, the guy in the field watching and making sure that, that things are done right and try to, try to, you know, police that.
Make sure the roof's the test problem.
Mr. Vice President, just one, one point, thanks for sharing your knowledge because it's, we're blessed to have you on board, especially since Reed has been gone. Just as a reminder to the board, when we repaired the roof at the queen, we discussed warranties extensively at that time. And at that time, I know that we were very grateful to have the warranty that we did for the unfortunate situation with that roof. And so, you know, we're recapping this again, but I just thought I'd remind everybody, I mean, we have a good warranty system in place for the district, correct, with our roofs?
Yes, we've been fighting for that. It's, it's, if we can, we've been trying to stay within the budget. We've been using thirty-year, no, you know, no cost to the district. Of course, you always run into the financial problems, can we do these within the budget? So that's been a real concern. We've looked at other things. I don't think there's anything comparable to it. But, you know, money to drive the worst of a lot of things.
Certainly, certainly. And, but again, I know when that situation happened at the queen, we were very fortunate. And God forbid that the castle of light that happened again, again, we do have our safeguards in place as we did at that time.
Let me say this also.
And I thank you for your knowledge.
Let me say this, and first of all, I'll say that Mr. Langish, as you first, that he's very particular. So he gets every little bit he cranes, and that's good, so we appreciate that. We have heard you, and we have, I'll admit, we've had some issues with warranties in the packs. But our warranties today, as we are putting them forward, they are what we want. And we talk about warranty, we make sure that our warranties are there for our new and renovated schools. And if we can, Mr. Langish, is that we can get a thirty-year warranty, no expense to the district, that is what we're doing, even if it costs a little bit more, because we do want that security.
Mr. Vice President, call for a motion. Say it.
Call for it.
Thank you. Does he deliver, perhaps?
Yes, I'd like to move, to pull item number one.
You've already got, you've already got a motion, a motion was already on the floor for the consent agenda. So you were discussing that.
We're discussing, I don't want to.
So you can't pull it, it's still on the floor.
So how do we vote on individual items? If we wanted to vote on individual items, one and nine individually, what type of motion would we need to make? Because if we continue doing it that way, if I have a question for any other board member, after making a session, we vote on all the agenda heights as a whole, we don't want to do that. So how do we pull the agenda heights independently to vote on? Just the?
If you look at what Mr. Lausten read, okay, he asked, does anyone want to pull any items? And no one said anything, and he says, okay, I'll take a motion.
No, Mr. Hillary, trustee Hillary's saying you wanted to pull one.
No, he said, I have a number of, you already had a motion on the floor. You had a motion on the floor.
Okay, how do we, how do we present the motion? Because the law has, it's not over here.
You have, it doesn't matter, Mr. Lausten, if you have a motion on the floor for one through, for your, for your entire consent agenda, you can move to amend that motion.
Okay.
Okay, you can, you can move to, not amend it, because then you have add, not subtract. You can move to table.
Yeah.
But you're tabling one through twelve. You had a, you had a motion on the floor, you already had a second. You can either vote on it, someone can table, if you're going to move to table, then you two-thirds, vote, not majority.
I would have to, I would have to be, I would have to move on motion.
Whoever made, no, whoever, you already have, the motion is, the motion is, the motion is in second. This is discussion. You were, you should have called for the vote.
I did.
Okay, then, then it needs, then when you call for a vote, all discussion stops. And you need to vote. If it fails, then you can, somebody can make a different motion. But right now, you have the entire consent agenda. When he, the first thing he reads is, if you want to pull one, let me know. No one said anything, and there was a motion put on the floor and a second. And then you asked to discuss one and nine.
I'll have to move my book, because I want to be sure that we.
Okay, you had to, right now, I understand, right now, what's on the floor is your consent agenda, one through twelve. And the vote, it's been called for the vote. The only thing you can do right now is vote on. If it doesn't pass, then you start over with a new motion. Okay?
Okay, this time we're going to call a vote for consent agendas, items one through twelve. Just president, I make a motion?
No.
Why, I keep having a motion.
Yeah, it's, right now, he should call for the vote, he should say all of them.
All in favor? I, I vote.
All of them.
No. Motion is being carried.
Four, two.
Four, two?
No.
Three, three.
Um, hold on, please.
Did you vote only that one?
No.
Right.
So it's three, three?
Three, three, right.
No, I'm saying no, because I have a concern. I'm trying, I want, I want to be clear on what we're doing, because I think it's.
But this time we're going to call a vote.
Voting on the consent agenda. And I am voting on the agenda, is what I'm doing. So my vote is yes.
Okay, so it's a four, two.
So the four, 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 two?
Yes, so the consent agenda passed.
Motion carried.
Motion carried.
At this time, we will go into closed session. Okay, at this time, sorry, at this time, we're going to put participation, we have Ms. Tiffany, how many?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to request that this item to be removed from the agenda until the teachers are able to be here to actually receive the honor.
Okay, um, okay, just, okay, and I thought, that's nice, I'll take that. But I thought that you all had talked about that, and I'm sorry, we could have, I thought you could take care of that, but we will take care of that.
It's okay, if I speak with them, or they weren't aware of it. And so I just ask that they reach back to you, or that I would ask them, ask you permission. So that's, so they have the permission.
Okay, that's correct, yes, great, okay.
While you're here, Miss Hannah, I'd like to thank you for the, for your honor and for you receiving that award. And thank you for all the hard work that you do here for the city, for us.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. At this time.
If it's possible, we were thinking to do it in January?
January.
Then that would be great. If not, I'll just wait for the hall to let me.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
At this time, we will go back into closed session, and we will be meeting in fifteen minutes. We will move to staff, of course. That's right.
Yes. Thank you, Vice President Garty. Before we go forward, I would like to say a couple of things. First of all, I do want to thank our community for the support that they've shown us over the year. We are in December, and I cannot believe we've made it to this point, it has gone by extremely fast. So, but I do want to thank our community for the support that they've shown, in particularly, the past week. We have truly been ecstatic about the things that our, our community has done. For instance, the Boston Moreno Law Firm hosted our life skills students, as well as our PPCD students, to a shopping spree at Walmart. And a wonderful, wonderful, beautiful, elegant lunch at the elegante. So, and, and they gave each one of our students fifty dollars to go to Walmart and shop for their families or friends. So that is amazing. So we thank the Moss, Moss Law Firm for that, for that, for their dedication. They've done it for six years, and we just appreciate them. And they were featured on Channel Twelve News. Also, the Public School Foundation joined us Monday morning and issued out almost ten thousand dollars in grants to our teachers. We had, I think it was twenty-two teachers from twelve different campuses that wrote grants that will help them in delivery of instruction. And they received from three hundred, nine hundred, six hundred dollars in grants. So that was absolutely wonderful. So we invited the teachers to our leadership meeting, and it was really, really nice. Also, we have partnered with Energy, and they're coming with the JAG, and that means Job for America graduates. And we are working out the details with the JAG program with Energy, and we're just really excited about that grant, which is a seventy-five thousand dollar grant to assist our students in, in trying to get jobs after they graduate. Also, Mrs. Leje will come with a check, it should take about that check that we received also. So our ninth graders, we want to thank Dr. Edward and Dr. Stretcher for their work. It was a lot of work, and they've done a lot of grants and working. Our students completed their first semester in the Early College High School, and they did it with such class, with such dynamic. We're so proud of those students. They were absolutely magnificent. So we thank Lamar State College, along with the ninth grade campus and the transportation department for getting them back to and fro, to and pro. So it was just a great year for them. Also, we want to congratulate the Wiggitt Early, Early Childhood under the direction of Dr. Ken Vine and Mrs. Frida Reynolds. This week, they completed having paid first two full-day, three-year-old program. So they, instead of having a half-day, three-year-old program, we're keeping the three-year-olds all day long. So parents are excited, they have a waiting list of fifty students, so they were able to get, I think about twenty, thirty-five of those students in a classroom. So now we have a couple more that are out there, we're waiting on them. So we're looking to make sure that next year we add another class. And I think, if I'm correct, Dr. Vine, I think by the year two thousand twenty-one, all five of our three-year-old programs must be full-day. So this is a pilot program. So can you imagine little three-year-olds having to go to school all day long? They should be brilliant by the time they get to their senior year. So, well, in a couple of years, we'll be taking the babies, we'll be taking them back nine months, that's what we'll say. And we'll bring them in, and we'll try to do our very best for them. Also, I do want to congratulate the Port Arthur Independent School District Elementary Choir and Band students for a wonderful band concert, band and choir concert on, this last week. They did an absolutely beautiful job. And then we had the privilege to go to Antioch and listen to our high school band and choir. And I tell you, they blew it out of the water. They were absolutely magnificent. So we're looking forward to the two hundred thirty band students that we saw in elementary perform last week, to move up through middle school and go on to high school. And can you imagine the field with three hundred-plus students on that field? So we're excited about that. So we want to thank the board of trustees for, every time we ask them for something they get, we ask for more supplies or more instruments, now, they, they bark a little bit, you know how they bark? They have bark and all that, but they, but they do love what they do, and they usually give us what we need. And then they are proud of our students as well, they are truly, truly proud. So that's just a little highlight of what's going on, and that just happened this week. We received over a hundred thousand dollars in support, that's what I'm saying, support, from community people, community businesses. So that says a lot for our community, and it says a lot for the staff and students of the Port Arthur Independent School District. So as Mrs. Puzz and Mrs. Leje comes forward for their brief presentation, and we'll see.
Said that numerous times, briefly. Okay, I'm Rita Leje, I'm on the post, where's the science department?
This year in science, we're going to look at star requirements, we're going to look at science laboratory investigations, teacher meetings, district science fair, the Jason Project, and our tank frame.
This past year, we strongly had sixty-six percent math grade for the science department.
Students are striving for the stars, and this simply means that in our secondary level, that our students are working at forty percent of implementing laboratory investigations in their science classrooms. This is mandated by the state, and the students are working very hard at obtaining high-level learning.
At elementary, science activities have included parent science night at Downing School, and investigations in math, solar energy, electricity, erosion and weathering, landforms, and physical science. The Jason Project is a program that's designed to train in-school science teachers in how to provide additional investigations for their children. All the teachers went two nights for three hours after school for this trial.
We're also excited to once again have our science fair in our district. Students from across the campuses were working development to present their projects. This year, our elementary winners were from Adams, Lee, and Travis. And our secondary campus winners were from Thomas Jefferson and Lincoln.
The time trailer came back to Port Arthur this year. It's the Texas Alliance for Minorities in Engineering, to help children learn science from scientists. These are engineers from local plants who came and gave their time to work with children on activities inside the trailer. This was paid for by the Port Arthur Industrial Group, and it went to all our elementary and middle schools.
And what we're doing while they're teachers, we all know that they are the backbone of PISD and the supervisors. We are assisting them to align their staff development in areas of concern, and we're working with them to meet their deadlines and their datas, and to share those ideas on a consistent basis.
This year, Mini-CAS, which is the regional science conference, will be back in BISD, and it will be at Memorial High School on February the eighteenth. And we are really happy to have all these science teachers back in our district. And the good news that we got today was to find out that Downing School received a grant they wrote for from BASF Total in the amount of ten thousand dollars for a science camp for history. So we're really excited about that. So in science, we always say, somewhere, something incredible is waiting to be found. So Merry Christmas from the reality table and the science department.
We were, uh, women, public participation, now we're doing staff reports, and then we'll approve the minutes, okay? I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask that, uh, Dr. Deadwood come forward and talk about the ASAP program, give an update on ASAP.
Good evening, Vice Presidents, um, Barti and Superintendent Schools, Dr. Porter, and members of the board trustees. As you know, the primary function, uh, functions of the ASAP program are three. Public relations, safety and security, and the truancy program. And when we think about the truancy program, um, we have to consider, uh, what it's looking like from data standpoint. And as we take a look at the truancy program, you know that with the, uh, passing of House Bill twenty-three ninety-eight, it changed the way we looked at truancy in the state of Texas, it decriminalized the, uh, truancy piece. So, with that said, the Port Arthur Independent School District, along with the precinct eight constable office, carried out the new law. And this is what I think you, uh, should be aware of. In twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, the new law had not come into play, but the constable's office had begun a process to address truancy, uh, in a proactive way, and a step ahead of the legislative, uh, action that took place with House Bill twenty-three ninety-eight. Twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, fifty, fifty-six home visits were made, and sixty-six cases were filed. We don't have any record of student conferences for the twenty-fourteen, fifteen-year, nor the tru- truancy diversion program. The average daily attendance for P I S D in twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen was ninety-three point seven, that's for the district. Okay, and remember, this is prior to House Bill twenty-three ninety-eight. Now, with the coming of the House, the House Bill twenty-three ninety-eight, which decriminalized truancy, in twenty-fifteen, sixteen, there were forty-one home visits, twenty-six cases filed. And with twenty-three ninety-eight student conferences, there were two hundred and forty-nine student conferences. These conferences were held by administrators on campus, remember, we're being proactive, we're not going to court, we're not making referrals. Okay, and in the truancy diversion program, in twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, there were two hundred and fifty-three students recommended for that program, that was for the year. And, and remember, in twenty-fifteen, sixteen, the law came into place in twenty-fifteen. But districts and even the county didn't wrap their heads around this new piece of legislation to some time in February and March of twenty-sixteen. So therefore, the information that we've given to you now for twenty-fifteen, sixteen is based upon, I would say, a semester of data. And then, um, the average daily attendance for twenty-fifteen, sixteen was ninety-three point six. And remember, in twenty thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, it was ninety-three point seven, not a major difference, not, it's, it's, it's negligible, uh, the difference there. Okay, now let's look at August to November of twenty-sixteen, seventeen. As far as home visits are concerned, sixty home visits have been made, cases filed, seven. Student conferences held, two hundred and fourteen. Now, remember, for the school year twenty-fifteen, sixteen, two hundred and forty-nine conferences were held for the entire year. But at this juncture, in November, we've already held two hundred and fourteen conferences. And the truancy diversion program, uh, has recommended, uh, we've had one hundred and seventy students to go through that truancy diversion program. The attendance rate for Port Arthur I S D through November is ninety-four point forty-eight. So, there is really no statistical difference there. So, if for it to be a statistical difference, we'd have to go one, at least one point oh, that hasn't occurred. So, uh, I think that the measures that we're putting in place are working, they're effective. Let me go to other data and share it with you. Regional data, in twenty-fourteen, fifteen, there were one thousand six hundred and sixty cases, sixty-eight cases filed, regionally. And in twenty-fifteen, sixteen, one hundred and forty-six cases filed, regionally, and I'm talking about regionally. And I don't have the data to show, to show for November, from August to November, the period we're in now. Don't have that data for regional information, but if you look, there is a drastic drop in cases filed regionally. And it's going along with House Bill twenty-three ninety-eight. Now, let's look at the state. In twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, thirty-two thousand three hundred and nineteen cases were filed, truancy cases. In twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, fifteen thousand six hundred and seventeen cases were filed. So, the districts and the regional and state, all of those areas are showing a decline, and it's based upon House Bill twenty-three ninety-eight and the preventive measures that are being put in place. I think that, as we look at, uh, the decriminalizing of the House Bill, we can see that we're moving in the right direction. And I think that one thing that we have to take under consideration is that the preventive measures that are implemented in the district in conjunction with the constable's office, as it relates to House Bill twenty-three ninety-eight, those things are working. And what you will also see in this data, district, regional, state, you will find that if you look at truancy, there, it, uh, the arguments of truancy, they really are outside of the criminal justice system. They're more or less related to social services and building relationships, and that's what House Bill twenty-three ninety-eight is all about. And that's an update on what we're doing in P I S D.
First of all, Dr. Deadwood, let me quickly rest a second, I'm having, uh, well, let me quickly rest a second. The legacy of your dad is in great stead, even as you're standing there talking about truancy. Uh, your dad, uh, comes to my mind, uh, 'cause he had to come get me. Uh, but, uh, thank God, uh, that, uh, that Mr. Russell Deadwood was in our district, and so as he, as you stand there, uh, I'm thinking about him now.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
But, um, but how does House Bill twenty-three ninety-eight, um, directly, I, you gave us kind of the gist of, of, you know, that, but how, and how we enforce, uh, the truancy program and the ASAP program? What are the basic tenants of that, or the changes that is precipitated, and how we are reaching out? I heard you say it's about relationships, uh, but has it taken the teeth out of our efforts to some degree?
No, it really hasn't taken the teeth out of our efforts, what, in decriminalizing, what it has done is said to a student, we're not gonna have you with a criminal record based upon your attendance, but it said to parents, we're gonna make this a civil situation. So, if a student, uh, gets ten unexcused absences in a six-month period, then, uh, that a case can be filed when it's filed with power. But prior to that, you have warnings, warning calls to the home, you have counselors meeting with students, you have the diversion program that we implement, and then when a kid gets to, uh, let's say, five to seven unexcused absences, then the constables come in with that truancy diversionary, uh, diversionary program, and they invite parents as well as students. Now, if a kid is under the age of twelve, then they don't invite, uh, students to come, they only invite the parents to come. So, there are stopgap measures to keep it from escalating to the point where we're talking about. And if you look, and the data that we presented from the regional and state, that data will correlate with what was, what's happening in the Port Arthur Independent School District.
Thank you, sir, and I greatly appreciate that, because one of the things that I am, uh, grateful for is, and sensitive to, is to ensure, uh, that we don't, uh, feed the prison pipeline. Uh, so many of our young kids we get in situations, ultimately, they didn't have, um, have records, ultimately because something that's happened transpired in school, and something else might happen, and they've already been jump-started into that prison pipeline. So, I'm grateful for that, and I, I'm grateful that we're able to go in that direction.
I'd just like to kind of feedback off of trustee, I got to remember your dad, I remember your mom too, thank you. Dad brought him in the house, and your mom was pressing my head, so anyway, but I remember too, he did a good job, he's a bold, bold man in the community. But my question, Mr. Deadwood, is this, the ASAP program, the constable's office, they report directly to you?
Well, let's say, the constable office, the constables report to, uh, Constable Collins. But in conjunction with the P I S D and with Constable Collins, we manage the situation together, but their immediate supervisor is Constable Collins. And, and, and we collaborate on matters that, uh, pertain to the Port Arthur Independent School District, and, of course, we dialogue with the superintendent regarding issues, and then he gives me some latitude, uh, to make decisions, and then he has the authority to always overturn those decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Deadwood, for your, uh, report on the ASAP program. Uh, moving to the minutes, consider.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, sir. Moving to the minutes, consider, and we'll give appropriate approvals of the November seventeenth, twenty-sixteen board meeting. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. Okay, motion by Ms. Ambrose, second by Mr. Reed on the paper. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now we go to information, uh, Dr. Porter.
Okay, thank you, for the first, the annual announcement of board training. It is the basic obligation and expectation of a sitting board member to complete the required board training each year. The information will be reflected in the board minutes as tier one, tier two, and tier three training, and will be made available to the public. In accordance with the State Board of Education rules, new board member, each new board member will receive tier one training, which includes a local district orientation and a basic orientation regarding the Texas Education Code and relevant legal obligations. All sitting board members will receive updates regarding the Texas Education Code after each session of the Texas Legislature, including each regular session and call session related to education. Tier one, the following first-year board members have completed the required district orientation training. Donald R. Frank Senior. Texas Education Code orientation, the following first-year board members have completed the required orientation training regarding the Texas Education Code and relevant legal obligations, Donald R. Frank Senior. Texas Education Code required update training, the following board members have completed the required update to the basic orientation to the Texas Education Code. Kenneth Lofton, Brandon S. Barti, Deborah Ambrose, Joseph L. Gilery the Second, and Dr. Thomas Kenlaw the Third, and Robert Reed. Tier two, teamwork, the following board members have completed the required annual team-building training. Deborah Ambrose, Brandon S. Barti, Donald R. Frank Senior, Joseph L. Gilery the Second, Dr. Thomas Kenlaw the Third, Kenneth W. Lofton, Robert Reed. Tier three, discretionary continuing education, the following board members have exceeded the required number of tier three continuing education hours per year. Deborah Ambrose, Brandon S. Barti, Donald R. Frank Senior, Joseph L. Gilery the Second, Dr. Thomas Kenlaw the Third, Kenneth W. Lofton, and Robert Reed. The average daily enrollment is eighty-eight seventy-seven, average daily attendance ninety-three ninety-seven.
Okay, go to the chairman. Give a motion on the floor. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll return back to closed session.